All right, we'll call to me to order. We'll write some questions.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everybody for being here today. This is the town council meeting Wednesday, August 7th, 2019. And if we could do a roll call, we'll start with you, Mike.
Okay, Mike McLaughlin here.
Debbie Cobb here.
Marty Wilson here.
Paul Edwardson here.
Mayor's manager.
And so Mayor's Town Update, WWU's the phone here, made some notes with Mike's on it. Trusses, they said they're gonna deliver them today. I don't think they quite made it for the bathrooms, but it's kind of exciting that they're finished. They're gonna drop them any time. And the best news is, is they're free. They're not gonna charge us for them. They found out for the town and for donated bathrooms and says, oh, we'll help you. They donated the trusses. I could get some of them, so.
Who did the trusses?
I tried to find out the name of the company, B&amp;E Contracting. Irwin Fletcher, he's the one that ordered them for us. He's the one that told them that they were for...
Atrus.
Atrus.
Atrus? Okay, Atrus. Anyway, they, and so anyway, they ended up donating themselves. So, pretty cool. So, anyway, thanks Irwin for help hooking us up on that. And also Sergeant Richard Fisher, yesterday, day before, we had engineers out there a couple weeks ago doing the, they're engineering on the compaction. And we don't have a report back yet. He thought we'd have it next week. So, once we get the report, then we can start moving dirt and figure out the compaction and haul it in some dirt and remove the saw and do all that stuff. So, anyway, we're on track to at least get things going. We're probably a couple weeks behind what we're hoping for, but it is what it is when you're building something. Wheat, wheat's just out of hand on some of these roadways around here. Just know that we haven't forgot or we're not paying attention to them. I guess I'm gonna have to get out there and personally do what it looks like. But some of these...
Wheat whacker party.
Yeah.
Bring your wheat whacker.
It's so funny, when you drive down there and if you go past the T intersection, the first house you have on the ride, that's Dwayne.
Stock.
Stock. You know, the guy's in, I know he's in the eighties, and there ain't a wheat on his property anywhere. I saw him, I was coming to the office yesterday or day before, and he's out there with a little hoe and hoeing a couple of them that were, you know, tiny weeds before they get big. And there ain't a wheat on his property anywhere. And this guy does the worst way on it. And there's a lot of people who do the same thing. They weed whacker them or chop them down. And we just have a few of them that just let them go.
Couldn't that be mitigation for fire part?
Well, it's, you know, they seem to try to do sound good. That'd be, that'd be a good idea. But anyway, letters have been sent out or in a process being sent out to these owners that everybody will listen anyway. And I've, I've got a toy that I found online that's, basically it's a wheat whacker, except that it's like this thing. It goes on the end of a Mini-X or, you know, a skid steer kind of a thing. It's hydraulic, it runs, it articulates, and would do everything we need to do to maintain those things on them. My hope is I'm gonna work on a payment grant, 'cause I can just see that would be maybe fire mitigation, and they have some grants for rural communities. I'm gonna work on some paperwork on that. It's due in September, so I gotta hustle, but that would be awesome to come up with something like that, a machine that can help us mitigate fire. Even in these fields that are backing on, I had talked to some people over here the other day that where their fence is backed up to this field, they feel significantly exposed. And I'm not sure we should be doing more on the mitigation as far as going out here in the field and hiring someone to cut some fire breaks as far as, you know, take a farmer that's got a disc and we disc fire breaks at least. I just think we need to consider doing more on that. So, I'll try and talk to the fire chief about that. But anyway, we haven't, we're not ignoring those where we are, some of those. The other thing, I got some calls on, I haven't talked to Dale yet about it. But the cutouts, I know we talked about in the last water, we'll be about repairing some of those, and I'm not sure if they're gonna be doing that. But I did get a call on the one that was Apple Blossom. Someone called me up and says, it's more like a trench anymore. It's in so bad. I says, yeah, I'm sorry, it's taking so long to get it fixed. He says, oh, no, they fixed it once, so it didn't last. Same with that people from, I think we fixed his once and it didn't last. So, anyway, I'm looking forward to trying to get those done. So are the people that keep calling me on it. So, maybe once water district, you can kind of be able to go on that and tell someone or unless you wanna do it now, which is fine too.
I was, I was prepared to do it, and then I got told that you still wanted Richard Fisher to do it, so I'm gonna contact Richard Fisher and see what he'll give a price for my measurements.
Yeah, I was, that's probably a mis-screwed just a little bit. What I said was, well, last time we fixed them, they only lasted a month. So, how we did it probably wasn't the right way. And if we get over excavated, make sure they compact it, and we're doing saw cuts, you know, just have a nice straight edge, and then we're compacting that stuff down there. That's kind of the right way to do it.
And that's what I was, that's what, I mean, I've done a hundred of these patches. We've never put any cold patch in. There's never been any cold patch ever put in any of those. Alls it was, was, is the existing dirt that got put back in. There's never been any asphalt put in any of those. So, Richard's way that he wants to do it is completely correct. I mean, it needs to be cleaned out, but I mean, I've got, I've got a, the district owns a saw, a compactor.
I'm okay with you guys doing it. I just wanna make sure that we're doing them like that. That's all.
Yeah.
That was my phone call to Harold Merrill, was like, why are you saying they'll be fixed?
The district will bunch of money if we just do it in-house.
I'm okay with that. Just, I just wanna make sure that we're...
We have a whacker packer. We just, yeah. I was actually supposed to get a cold patch up here today, but I canceled that, so.
All right. All right, well, we're on the same page now?
I'm totally on the same page.
So, and if you need help, I'll try and find someone to help. In fact, I think Kevin, he was here at the town today, looking for some hours, and I had him to help me doing some stuff. So, he might even be able to help you out if you want some help to do that. We'll snag him, because I'm okay with saving some money. I have no problem. I just, I just don't wanna...
No, I like...
My understanding was that trunks are, at one time, they got patched, but maybe I'm wrong. I just wanna get it done. The other one that's in Cedar Point, what the heck is going on over there? There's a nice big cut in the...
I've never done a cut-in, and I've still never done a hot cut in Cedar Point. But let's take that back. I've done Dale Anderson, and I've done...
It's on the way if you go that, run the circle, turn right, first left.
I've been saying lame.
Yeah, who did that?
What happened, that was a leak there some time ago, and that's when Jerry used to work on that property, and I called him, and enough that he finally fixed the leak, when he dug it up, fixed the leak, but he didn't repatch it. He just left it square there. So, it needs to be patched.
So, we can just do that at the same, yeah, just do that at the same time?
Why don't you say that or saw him and make him...
I'm buying a lot of, I'm buying five yards of cold patch. So, we've got cold patch on hand.
We got plenty of it.
Yep.
Right. And it's already stocked over there too, and it's got a...
Yes.
It's already stocked and it's got a nice thing, so.
Hey, while we're on that subject, I'm sure you've seen the sewer that's sinking over there also. That whole infrastructure, we're losing all of that. That's caving in, the roads over there, just FYI for you guys.
But a tiny hole?
Oh, all over.
Down the way through that, correct.
All over. I mean, the, you know, that dry system got built over there, and it's never been charged, and everything is just deteriorating, and it's... Well, I can go on about that anyways. You have the CHI, the SEAL project that went on wasn't good enough, and so, you know, stuff has just pulled away, pulling away from all of those concrete collars on that sewer system over there.
All right, well, we'll talk about a solution at another meeting, but the leaks coming up between the tracks over there, and so I was gonna work on trying to get a, some kind of solution over there. I was gonna put Kevin on it with weed whacker, or something a little... I wanted to get those weeds down there, come out between the cement curbing and the blacktop. And, you know, it's, either that or we've gotta be spraying them on our basis, so.
When they did that oil job over there, they didn't cut any of the weeds or anything when they did that. They just went right through. They just went right through, everything didn't, so there's a lot, yeah.
All right.
It was a hack job.
All right, so the other, the only other thing I wanna bring up was, I think that's it. So, all right, so that's it for Mayor's Town Update. Let's see if anybody has any questions. We'll move on to the hearing for town council and mayor salary adjustments that were made in 2014, 15. What happened was is we had a request for information that we get some kind of time asking for where the mayor's salary was set, the rate that it is, and the salary for the town council people, and we couldn't find it. So, cleaning up paperwork, we've been paying the same amount since 2014, I think it was, for the town council, and since 2015 for the mayor. And I might have a little slope locked. Is it the right way? Okay. And that's how it's been paid out, but we can't see the words ever resolution that solidified that. And so, that's what we're doing. We're not changing anything. We're not adding anything. We're not mellowing anything. We're just making it official and voting on it, what happened four or five years ago. Anyway, so I'll open up the hearing, public hearing, or any comments that people wanna make regarding this. I don't see anybody rushing to the polls. Okay, any questions from anybody? Anybody has anything to say, so. So, we'll close the public hearing then for the item number one hearing for town council and mayor salary adjustments that were made in 2014, 2015. Item two, discussion action, adoption of ordinance, zero dash two point nine dash ten and zero dash two point nine dash eleven, which is the town council mayor salary. We did those two ordinances because the mayor's salary, the time that they started the practice of paying that were different, ones in 2014, ones in 2015. And so, we recite that in the ordinance that, when those began, when they started. And so, therefore, there's just, there's two of them. I just thought it better to separate them out. And I shouldn't say it's my idea. It's Michelle's idea, and she's amazing, so it's probably the right way to do it. So, anyway, so anybody having questions on that, any discussion on that?
I make a motion we accept ordinance number zero dash two nineteen dash ten, mayoral compensation schedule.
Okay, and, okay, we have a second and a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. And item two, or the next one, was the other ordinance.
I make a motion we accept ordinance number zero dash two nineteen dash eleven, town council compensation schedule.
I wanna just back up just one second. The other thing that we put in this ordinance for the mayor's salary, the past two mayors have taken health benefits as part of the compensation package. And in this, we did put in disposition, including no other benefits. It's kind of a volunteer position anyway, even at eight fifty a month, and I don't think it's appropriate that we're paying for health insurance for the mayor and the whole family and all the stuff that was helping you for us.
How much does that save them?
I wanna say that includes that, but I don't know what it is, but it's a lot of money. And we're probably never gonna know about it. Anyway, that was included in there. So, let's move on. So, you made a motion?
Yeah.
And let's do a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. I know, we're just waiting on Mike to start it. Now, our next one is adoption of resolution R dash two point nine dash oh seven, allocation of Big Plains Water and Sewer Special Service District late fees. Just kind of review on that, the late fees in the past administration, it started with Rick Moyer, and the late fees were retained by the town. And the district came to me in September and wanted to separate out because they wanted to, has our bookkeeping, so they retained those fees. I told them they didn't have to separate out two retainers that we could visit that and let them keep their fees, their late fees. They separated anyway, but I still think it's probably the right thing to do if it's their late fees, that they keep them. Back then, in September, I kind of shot my mouth out and said it's okay that we pay those, but we didn't wanna did the paperwork on it. So, today we're discussing it, and we'd like to see how everybody feels about it.
I have a question. If we're gonna go back to letting them keep the late fees, are we gonna get into any kind of interlocal to recoup the cost of clerical administrative?
We've, I talked to Ben, said a while ago, about doing an interlocal agreement. And I think the interlocal agreement would just do the bookkeeping though. Is that right then?
Bookkeeping in like the clerk position?
Yeah.
Answering, Donald during that himself, is that?
I mean, yeah, yeah, it would all be a part of that. I mean, there would be, there would be a share of essentially some office expenses. It's not to say that there is not already an interlocal agreement. There was one executed in 2000, either thirteen or fifteen?
Fifteen.
But it left a lot open for interpretation. It was very vague on the amounts. And so, the, my recommendation is that we report a new interlocal agreement that's very specific, just so that for budgeting purposes, both entities can know what to understand, what to expect as far as finances.
Are we presently building a water company for your services and Michelle's services?
Currently not.
I just probably should've talked to council about it, but I opted to not do that because the state of finances of the district were tight enough that I wanted to make sure in May that they have enough money to make the payment. But it was my intention on the new budget year that we go ahead and start an interlocal agreement. I talked to Ben about that in May, but in May, he's also doing the budgets, and, you know, then we're doing the year-end closeout, and then, you know, so he's been pretty covered up. So, I've kind of wanted to leave way to cycle on that, but I think it's probably something we'd fund to do in from the budget year 2000, for this particular current year that we would start in enacting something like that. I guess we could put this up in the meeting if we did that.
I think we need to table and go over and find exactly what we're doing, what the costs are right now that we're doing for free for the water work, so.
How much money does it amount to, the late fees, on a comparative basis, average?
Hundred and fifty dollars, something like that a month. And early in the year, when you look at cumulative since September, the billing was separated September through December. We didn't assess late fees January, February, so really, since September, it's, you know, there's a lot. It's not a lot, so.
When I was sort of putting it in the mayor, they told me it's about twenty-nine thousand dollars altogether from the inception of the water to that point. But, see, if I had over that number of years, I figured it's, you know, about a hundred a month on average. But I didn't verify that number. That was just their, their number. So, but I guess Ben's is probably the right number as far as what the normal rolling average is on it, so. All right, well, I make a motion that, or you guys wanna make a motion to table out items?
I'd like to make a motion we table the item until we review it and find out what the total cost is.
So, we're not gonna adopt this resolution?
Not today. We'll just, we'll put it in the next meeting. We'll get that resolution and, or the interlocal agreement, and we'll handle it all at one time, so. And so, you made the motion?
I second it.
Aye.
All right, let's vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, so we're just going to table out items for right now. We'll just do it at the next meeting, but I just think it's the right thing to do. Please put it in writing. That's the problem we had before, was this, was a verbal agreement, and that's what I did with Water District, I made a verbal agreement, and it was never been down, you know, I just don't wanna do the same mistake where a year from now, two years from now, it's another verbal agreement that was done, you know, in town meeting, which recorded minutes or anything, and I wanted to just get it cleaned up, clean up the paperwork, so.
Ben, by the next meeting, could you have the total come out of the late fees you're outstanding and what it's costing the town monthly, the services?
Yes, that would be part of the interlocal agreement analysis also.
All right, we'll try and, we'll try and get that on the next one. He does have some audit stuff going on. That's probably a priority that, we're heading the right direction on it. Item number four on the agenda is inverted audit engagement. This is just a manual thing. Every year, we, they do an audit for us, or the auditors. Basically cursory audits. They don't actually go in the books, and with my tooth, they wanna make sure that we're following our own protocols and procurement practices, and they'll paper trail a few randomly selected items. They have Ben, you know, all of those actually will probably end up talking to all of us. Are you aware of any wrongdoing, things like that? Anyway, we have a motion on, it's engagement letter. Any questions on it?
We have to accept it or can we adjourn it?
Yeah.
I make a motion we accept the inverted audit engagement procedure.
Aye.
And vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And motion carries.
I'm ready to minutes.
And then the next, the last item here is, well, not last item, but approval minutes for seven seventeen.
I make a motion we accept the minutes as noted for July 17th, 2019.
One second.
And vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And reports and recommendations and announcements, events committee, Tish, Debbie, yes, Evan and Nora.
So, our last ice cream social of the year will be August 17th at 7:00 PM, and I hope to see everybody come out, and it sounds like we need to have a weed whacker party. So, fire the weed whackers and get them going. But, and then Founder's Day is September 21st. Thank you, Debbie. And we're still bouncing around whether we're gonna have barbecue or pancake breakfast. So, we'll get that to everybody as soon as possible, and we'll meet you next week to finalize that, so.
One of the thoughts is if we do upgrade anyway, and actually, I'm kind of surprised. Upgrade was a big deal last year. Boy, the kids lined up here.
Yeah.
Lots of candy thrown out.
Mine, they never saw candy before.
Exactly. It was a treat or something. I don't know, but it was, and since we're there so early, you know, maybe just do pancake breakfast kind of a thing, and some midday activities and call, hey, anybody have an opinion you wanna share on it?
Who's for pancakes?
Barbecue.
Who's for barbecue?
All right.
See, last year, we did the rib cook-off, and that was kind of fun, doing several people just put out their favorite ribs and some of... Well, rub it in.
There's some big payoffs going on.
Yeah, but that's outcome I got sick later, right? Too many of them.
But I have to say that Tony's, he's a tough one to beat too. He makes... Jerry, yeah, Jerry's a smoker too, that's right, yeah. Yeah, all three of us use the same kind of smoker, I think. That's probably why they were like, next, hard to say one was better than the other, so.
It came down to the pellets.
But that's kind of fun doing the rib cook-off, and it could be a fun thing, and so. Anyway, we'll, we'll let these guys figure out how they wanna do it. And if you want to provide any feedback, you know, feel free to contact them. Got anything else? And planning commission, I'll bring up a couple of things, just so you guys are aware of what's on the agenda or what we're looking at. Number one's a shipping container ordinance. We get a lot pushed back on shipping containers that are still appearing without adhering to the ordinances of having to match the finish and color and so forth of a house. And we have several of them sent in to, I wanna say to Rachel, what was that the right name, our district attorney, we've sent them over to her for prosecution. They've been notified twice, and sixty days later, it's time to do something about it. And those are sent off to her for her view, see what can be done about it. But we have it on the PC agenda because the verbiage on it, it's not as clear as it could be. I think it's clear enough that we'll have no prosecution problem, but I like to make it easier to read. And the way it's read right now says, no shipping containers. I'll let you do this. And, you know, I like to just be, maybe change that verbiage a little bit, you know, that makes it a little more plain as day. Speaking of plain as day, the lighting ordinance. We all thought we had this lighting ordinance that says you can't have lighting that's shining straight out, you know, and that's not the case when you read it. So, we're gonna put that back to the PC and let them link the verbiage and decide what a nice guy ordinance is gonna look like. And the other is temporary living in a recreational vehicle, you know, so your, you know, family comes to visit in a RV, how long should they be able to stay in it? And the code doesn't really limit them from moving for one day and coming back and staying another four months, basically, right now. And four months to come for a visit might be excessive, but we'll let them decide. There's something else we're gonna put on the agenda. Not all these items, these items will probably all be on the agenda, but not all items will be handled in that meeting. We'll put them on there just so they are aware of issues that we'll talk about a little bit. And then as the meeting time allows, they'll probably table these for a future meeting, so we're not in a four-hour meeting with the planning commission, so. Anyway, so on the agenda also is a, someone on Cedar Point wants to combine two lots into one. There was one other thing I think I missed. Did I catch them all?
Bubbling Wells?
Yeah, oh, Bubbling Wells, yeah. The general map change, Bubbling Wells, we'll have that paperwork on there as well. It won't be any decision-making. It's just a matter of discussion, and then scheduling, maybe have a hearing if they decide they feel like they got the trucks lined up on what they wanna do. So, that's kind of what, so the PC meeting's gonna be a pretty busy meeting this next time around. And not all the items will be handled, or Cynthia will kill me if I give her the four meetings, so, and I don't wanna, so. Anyway, any questions about any of that? And so, that answers the planning commission. Fire Department, fire chief asked to be excused. He's at a training event. Big Plains Water, Dale, do you have anything for us you'd like to share, we haven't already talked about?